Good to see you and good to see those who are watching on our YouTube channel. Welcome. Wanted to start off with our six priorities that this board has established, and they are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And I think we will hear most of those in the items that we have before us today. As is customary, we will open with an invocation. I've asked Vice Chairman Patrick Harris to lead us in the invocation, and we will have the pledge led by American Legion Post 71 of Clayton. So if you choose to stand for the invocation, please do so now. And Vice Chairman Harris?
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you boldly this morning to praise you, Father, and thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. Lord, we thank you for the sunshine and the beautiful weather. We thank you for the blessings of health and family. Lord, we just ask that you bless this meeting and be with us as we go throughout each day. Father, give us the courage and the wisdom and the understanding and the compassion to make good decisions for this county. Father, bless those within the sound of my voice. Lead us in God's, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Just want to quickly encourage everyone here this week to thank a veteran, you know, perhaps your neighbor, uncle, aunt. We need that encouragement to be reassured that our community supports their veterans. Stand by. Detention. Outtake. Present. Play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy birthday to the Corps next Sunday.
And if you'll be, please be seated. And we do have a proclamation. And I have, and we have Robert Boyet here to present this proclamation, and I've called on a veteran and board member, April Stevens, to read the proclamation. Rob, do you have anything to open with?
Sir, just appreciate the support from the county commissioners for Veterans Day each year and audit the board does to help us with supporting veterans. And thank you for doing this proclamation.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Proclamation, Veterans Day 2024. Whereas for decades, America has paused on the 11th of November, the anniversary of the Armistice that concluded World War I, to remember and to honor our veterans of military service in proud and grateful recognition of the hardships and sacrifices by the millions of men and women who have defended our land in war and in peace. And whereas the freedoms we enjoy have been purchased and maintained at a high price, as Americans have been willing throughout our history to fight and die to preserve their individual rights as guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas Americans owe a great debt to all those who have served in defense of this nation throughout the generations for their sacrifices, often resulting in permanent injury or death, which have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual, and preserved our freedoms and promise of liberty as an example for oppressed persons of the world. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principle of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2024, as Veterans Day in Johnston County and urge our citizens to commend its observance. Proclaim this fourth day of November, 2024.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make that in the form of a motion, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I would say one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might, during this comment session. This year, as we observe Veterans Day, remind everybody of the Green Light Initiative. Have a green light in your window or on your porch to support Veterans Green Light Program.
Thank you for that. Now, and I just want to reckon I had mentioned Commissioner Stevens being a veteran. We also have Commissioner Godwin, who's a veteran, and Commissioner Fred Smith, who are all veterans on this board. And I also wanted to thank all of our county employees that have served our country and served it well. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. All right. The next item is approval and/or discussion of the agenda. There's any adjustments to the agenda that need to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. We have five items today. First one is approval of the minutes from October 7th, both the morning and afternoon sessions. We have some additions to the EOT system. We also have a request for temporary road closure for Celebrate Cleveland, which is December 3rd at 7:00. We also have some budget revisions to Finance Department Health, our Library, and the Sheriff's Department. And then we also have tax releases and refunds from September 16th through October the 15th. There's any of those items need to be removed for further discussion?
The consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda items are approved. Now we come to public comments, and we have our Human Resources Director, Paulette Williams, here is to recognize some retiring employees.
Hi, good morning, Board of Commissioners. First, I want to thank you all for your recent support of our employee appreciation, which was held October 21st through the 25th, and of course, thank our county administration as well as supporting our employees. Today, I'd like to recognize a few of our retirees. The first being, earlier this year, we had a retiree named Christopher Shambaw. He retired from our Emergency Services Department. Today, I have present with us some of our retirees for December of 2024. Not in attendance is Reece Williams, and she's with our Maintenance Division, and Chadwick Allen with our Johnston County Sheriff's Office. And then today, I do have three. I've got Michael Carson, also with our Johnston County Sheriff's Office, Melissa Ward with our Health Department, and Alfred or Wayne Price with our Public Utilities Department. So if those three wouldn't mind coming up to be recognized and perhaps for a photo with our Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, let's get a picture.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Hey, Wayne.
Thank you all.
Okay, get one more. Hold on, we got one more. All right, thank you.
Somebody's got big shoes to fill.
Yeah, that's right. All right, while they're making their way out, is there anyone here to speak to the public, for public comment? Not seeing anyone, so with that, we will, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. We got a few coming in. All right, not seeing anyone, we will move on. Madam Clerk, we had no emails, okay? So we will now move on to another proclamation. This is for the Office of American Legion Department, for the Department Commander position. And I believe Commissioner Godwin, you have a proclamation?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if I could ask Sergeant Major Retired Devell Durham to come forward while I read this proclamation. This is a proclamation for Johnston County, Resident for Office of the American Legion Department of North Carolina Department Commander. Whereas the American Legion Department of North Carolina will conduct an election in June of 2025 for the Office Department Commander at its annual convention. And whereas Johnston County has a resident and member of Leonard Moore Post 71 in Clayton, North Carolina, who meets the qualifications for that office. And whereas Devell Bo Durham Jr. earned his eligibility for membership in the American Legion by serving honorably on active duty in the United States Military Corps from June 1980 until October 2010. And whereas Devell Bo Durham Jr. has served as a member of the Johnston County Veteran Service Advisory Board to the Commissioners from 2016 to 2023, and has served on the Johnston County Hospice Team since 2016. And whereas Sergeant Major Durham is a National American Legion College graduate and has been a member of the American Legion for 14 years, has served as Post 71 Scholarship Committee Chairman, Post Oratorical Committee Chairman, Post First Vice Commander, Post Honor and Color Guard 2011-2018, has served as Post 71 Commander 2014-16. And whereas Sergeant Major Durham has also served as District 11 Vice Commander 2018-19, Commander 2019-21 for Johnston and Wake County, and also Division 3 Department Vice Commander 22-23. Whereas Sergeant Major Durham has served as Chairman of the Department of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, Chairman of the Children and Youth Commission, Chairman of the War on Terror Committee, Chairman of Internal Affairs Commission, the Constitution and Bylaws Committee, and is currently serving as Chairman of the Americanism Commission. And whereas Sergeant Major Durham is the recipient of the 2020 Johnston County NOW Veteran of the Year, National District Commander Race to the Top Category 3 Winner 2020-2024, NC Daughters of the American Revolution Veteran of the Year. He currently serves as the National Security Commission and Security Council, National Veterans Education, Other Benefits and Homeless Committee, National Foreign and Relations Committee, and National Resolution Screening Committee. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby endorse Devell Bo Durham Jr., member of the Leonard Moore Post 71 in Clayton for the High Office of Department of North Carolina Commander of the Year, Commander for the Year 2025-26. Proclaim this fourth day of November, 2024. I proudly make that in the motion, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comment? I do have a little bit of a comment. We had, I don't know when, how long ago this was, but I had a opportunity to meet the Bo. We were both walking the streets of Clayton, yeah, Front Street, not long after moving, and I got a chance to meet him and met somebody who you immediately could tell was proud of their country, proud of their faith, proud of their family, and proud of our community, and has served each one of those in a very distinguished manner. And I can't think of anyone who better represent our veterans in this position than you. So thank you for all you do and your friendship and the advice that you have given me over the years. Most of it good. I didn't list the other half, so you tried, you tried. But thank you for all you do. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, while the veterans are here, might remind everybody of the, maybe you already did, the program at Triple S. Veterans Program. Robert, you wanted to touch base on that?
And the Veterans Battlefield too. Let's hit them both, yeah.
Yeah. I wanted to mention that Veterans Day, obviously a week from today, there will be events, obviously, all over the nation and Johnston County. But there's one thing going on for, I think this will be the 18th year that Triple S High School will hold a Veterans Day event at 11:00 on November 11th in the gymnasium. Also, the next day on November the 12th at 7:00 PM, there will be a documentary screening called The Veterans Battlefield. It's a documentary about the trials and tribulations that veterans have and they go through when they return home from service and the resources that are available to help them. We're going to start that event at JCC at the Auditorium at 5:30 on the 12th. They invite all veterans and members of the community to come and support the veterans. So again, that's on the 11th, Veterans Day at Triple S High School, and on the 12th at 5:30 at JCC Auditorium.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to say give credit to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for putting the video together and for our staff for helping provide some additional supplement to that, so thank you. All right, Bryant, we're going to let you come on up now. And I think we've got a resolution for Farm City Week, and I've asked Commissioner Smith, when we get to that point, to read that proclamation.
Yes, sir, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you this morning at your regular monthly board meeting. And I want to say a special thanks to those of you that served in our great military and served our country as we're thinking about Veterans Day, and thank you for what you do to support county employees in things like that. And yeah, I just appreciate all those things this morning. But we are coming to you, bringing a proclamation for Farm City Week and celebrating Farm City Week here in Johnston County. This is something we've done for many, many years. It's been a long tradition. Here in Johnston County, this will be the 19th one that I have participated in during my career in Johnston County. And so we're excited about celebrating Farm City Week this year. Farm City Week is all about celebrating the conjunction of farmers and consumers and all the industries in between that it takes to make sure we have a safe and reliable food supply here in the United States of America, in our state of North Carolina, and in Johnston County. And that's what we'll be doing. And you all should have received a personal invitation for the banquet, which will be on the Tuesday night before Thanksgiving. We're hoping that you all can make it. We've got a great speaker this year. That'll be Ray Starling. Some of you may know Ray Starling, who is General Counsel for the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce and has served in various other roles in his legal career in North Carolina and at the national level. So we're very excited about having Ray. I've brought with me also Nicole Youngblood this morning. She wants to highlight a few things, and I want her to highlight a few things that's going on with Joe Co. grows agriculture here in Johnston County, some things you might see around our county that highlight agriculture and how important it is here in our county.
And I was going to say, thank you for being a good leader because you hire great people.
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate that. My position alone just shows the commitment that our county has to promoting and preserving agriculture. And certainly, I'm thankful for that and my family. But I do want to point out, there's a lot of ways that we're going to see Johnston County on our Thanksgiving dinnerscapes. And one of the best ways is through our sweet potato industry. And we've had a lot of awesome wins lately and a great way for us to celebrate Thanksgiving. So if any of y'all travel to Mecca anytime soon, or Meadow, if I pronounce the W correctly, is on the side of Highway 50. We work with J. Roland Wood Farms. They are a sweet potato producer in our county, and they allowed us to paint a beautiful mural about North Carolina sweet potatoes on the side of their barn. And that is super exciting and a great picture opportunity. Also, I want to mention that the November issue of our state magazine highlights North Carolina sweet potatoes. And it's very neat that you might notice that that farm that's highlighted is in Four Oaks, North Carolina, which happens to be in the great state of Johnston or great county of Johnston, as I like to say. So we're just very excited about all these things that we can celebrate. And with Thanksgiving being a time of giving thanks, I'm very thankful for all those things, just as I know y'all are. So I want to appreciate the opportunity to help make those connections and see them come to fruition. It's very exciting, so I want to thank y'all for that.
Thank you for the energy and enthusiasm you bring, even on, early on a Monday morning, to all that you do.
I've just got one other thing to say in reference to hiring good people. A good friend of mine, and this is kind of an old agricultural saying, he said, even a blind hog can find an acorn every now and then. And Nicole Youngblood definitely is that acorn. And we appreciate y'all considering the resolution and so forth this morning.
We'll give you credit for finding more than just one good one, so.
You know, that our state article also highlighted a Kinley area farmer, Sonny Scott, who grows a lot of sweet potatoes in Johnston County.
That's right. Thank you for mentioning.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If farms are going to survive, they have to be sustainable. And when people talk about sustainability, sometimes they don't get it right. Sustainability has three different things for agriculture. The first thing to be sustainable is we've got to have a sustainable environment. We've got to take care of the soil and the water and the resources to keep the environment productive. The second thing we have to have for sustainability is economic sustainability. The farmer must make a profit to stay in business. And the third thing for sustainability, which is what this resolution is about, is the farmer has to receive permission from the customer to grow the crop, and the customer has to be willing to buy it. Without a customer to buy the crop, the farmer cannot be sustainable. You have to have all three of those things to have a sustainable agriculture. Okay. Whereas agriculture has always been a cornerstone of Johnston County's way of life, we acknowledge that dedicated farmers improve our well-being by working to ensure a healthy and abundant agricultural supply. To succeed in this important enterprise, our farmers rely on essential partnerships with non-rural communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products across the country and around the world. During National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network to succeed in the agricultural industry. And whereas farming was America's first industry and continues today to provide us with many of the necessities of life, such as food, clothing, and fuel for our energy needs. Agricultural employs a substantial number of workers in Johnston County, including farmers, shippers, processors, marketers, retailers, truck drivers, inspectors, and others who annually contribute more than 723 million in value-added income in Johnston County. And whereas we welcome new opportunities for trade, hard work, and successful cooperation between farms and city workers to continue to play a vital role in our county's success and to be a critical resource for countless people here and around the nation. And whereas Farm City Collaboration helps maintain and prove our nation's food and fiber supply and contribute to a better quality of life for countless citizens, we commend the many Johnstonians whose hard work and ingenuity reflect the true spirit of America and to help to ensure a prosperous future for all. And whereas we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table, it is fitting that we count among our blessings the vital Farm City partnerships that have done so much to improve the quality of our lives. Rural and non-rural communities working together have made the most of our rich agricultural resources, and they continue to contribute to the health and well-being of our people and to the strength of our economy. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Johnston County, to hereby proclaim November 21st through 28th, 2024, as Farm City Week. We call upon citizens in rural and city areas to acknowledge and celebrate the achievement of all those who, working together, produce an abundance of agricultural products that strengthen and enriches our community and nation. Proclaim this the fourth day of November, 2024. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I'm full of comments today. But I did want to call out that our logo acknowledges the history of agriculture in Johnston County with the earth, the water, and then the green with the growth. So just to say that it's not forgotten the importance of agriculture and the history and the future of Johnston County. So, all right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
If I could add just one little minor thing. Commissioner Smith's comments were exactly on point of what it takes to make sustainable farms, and that's a much confused terminology. And so I'm thrilled that you highlighted that and appreciate it very much. And thank you for all that you, each one of you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, the next item on the agenda is for the Johnston Regional Airport, a request for approval of capital project budgets. And our Finance Director, Chad McLam, is here to present that.
Good morning. One of the crown jewels of the county, our Johnston County Airport, has been awarded a $19 million grant from the State Transportation Reserve Funds, and staffers requesting capital project, you allow us to set up capital projects for three projects they have that they want to use that money for. One is the Public Safety Hangar Complex, the East Side Roadway Access, and the Air Traffic Control Tower Sitting Study. And we respectfully request those capital projects to be set up.
Chad, you don't know of a time limit imposed on those grants, do you?
Talking to their board chairman, I think that the monies have to be encumbered within the next year. So they have a year to encumber a lot of these funds. So they're well within their way to get these projects started.
Sound like good projects.
They are.
Mr. Chad, I have a question also. If you wouldn't mind just sort of explaining the, I guess, the connection between the airport authority and then our approval of this, since that money came from the FAA directly to the authority.
So when the, when projects are submitted outside of the ordinary budget, the commissioner set the original budget for the airport that they request. And when monies are, when grants and things are done that are outside of that budget, even though their board would like to have these projects done or anything would outside the budget to be done, this board acts as the final authority because you have set their original budget. So anything that transpires outside of that original scope, you have to give your blessing on. So this is why we're here today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chad?
You need a motion?
I do need a motion.
I move that we approve the grants.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our District Attorney, Susan Doyle, here to present a request to continue temporary funding for staff positions. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you this morning about this request to fund a legal assistant and an assistant district attorney position in my office. You guys have been very generous in the past when my office has faced a similar situation where we had grant funding for positions that was getting ready to expire, and I am deeply grateful for that. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to address this this morning. Just a little explanation about how we got here. I have two positions, a legal assistant and an assistant district attorney position that are temporary positions that are funded by the Administrative Office of the Courts. The reason why I received those positions is because, as many of you are probably aware, Johnston County was a pilot county for our E-Courts system that rolled out. Johnston County, along with Hornet and Lee, as well as Wake, we were the first counties, the pilot counties, to go live with that program, and that began in February of 2023. As you also may be aware from, a lot of the news coverage about this Odyssey and E-Courts system, it has been fraught with many problems that we face as prosecutors, as well as our local law enforcement and our clerks. I have been working closely with our elected clerk of court to work through those issues as it affects prosecutors and clerks, as well as our local law enforcement, to deal with these issues. But what has become apparent to everyone that has gone live with Odyssey and E-Courts that the Administrative Office of the Courts has recognized that even though it's a system that you can do most of your business online and it's a paperless system, it actually is not as efficient as everyone had hoped. And the manpower that it requires is actually more than what we experienced before. So for example, whereas before we went live with E-Courts, I was able to send, for the most part, one assistant district attorney into court to work district court each day. Now, because of the inefficiency and the latency and the slowness of the system, it takes at least two prosecutors to go into court every single day to resolve or attempt to resolve the same number of cases that we did prior to this system being rolled out in our county. So that is why the Administrative Office of the Courts recognized that more positions were needed. And as counties have gone live with their rollouts with Odyssey and E-Courts, AOC has been very generous to grant each district these temporary positions. So my district has had these two temporary positions since we went live on February 13th, 2023. But they will be getting ready to expire at the end of this year with no continued funding. And that is why I'm before you all this morning to request that you continue that funding for the legal assistant and the assistant district attorney position. We currently have a workload study that has been done for all of the district attorney's offices across the state of North Carolina. And what the current workload study shows for my particular office in Johnston County is that my office is 3.5 positions short for what we need in order to operate efficiently and effectively. It is also the primary goal of the Conference of District Attorneys in this next legislative session to ask for positions, additional positions, and particularly legal assistant positions, because that seems to be our greatest need across the board at this point. So we will be asking for the legislature to permanently fund those positions in this next legislative session. I am hopeful that that will happen. I'm hopeful that I will get three positions. But until that time, again, that is why I'm here making, respectfully making this request of the county Commissioners to fund these positions for my office. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
And those positions are for six months?
I have asked at this point to fund until the end of the fiscal year, so June 30th, 2025. Obviously, we will see where we are with the legislative session. Sometimes they run longer. But I hope that we will be able to be in a position where I'll be looking at having these positions permanently funded at that point.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Ms. Doyle, you said that the fund, was the funding requested in the short session to continue these positions? Is that the reason that you need continuation money? Or is this just when this funds run out for these temporary positions?
So it was not, well, we actually did request them in the short session. I'll correct myself. We were not, knowing that it was a short session, but then we began to get information that they may consider additional funding sources for positions. So we ultimately revised our legislative request and did ask for funding of additional positions. But then, in the short session, that was not granted. So it is, and again, AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts, have been generous enough to continue the funding of these positions for our pilot counties, but they will expire at the end of this year.
Okay, so their funding only runs to the end of the year. They don't have enough to continue for this six-month period?
That's correct.
Okay.
Susan, through your affiliation with other DAs, are they running into similar shortages?
Yes, and I do have some information about that. You know, as other DA's offices across the state, we recognize that we don't always have enough positions that are state-funded by the legislature. And so we've had to look to other funding sources to obtain positions for our office to be able to effectively and efficiently run our offices with the staff that we need. So, for example, I was looking at this to prepare for this meeting. We currently have nine other prosecutorial districts across the state that have county-funded assistant district attorney positions. And I guess it's New Hanover County, Cumberland County, Durham, Alamance, Mecklenburg, Rowan, Union, Buncombe, and Henderson. So the most similar, I guess, county to ours would be Union County. They have two county-funded assistant district attorney positions, and they've actually had those for quite some time and continue to have those funded by their county. They've had those for years. There are also multiple districts, I think I counted approximately 11 prosecutorial districts across the state that have grant-funded district attorney legal assistant positions. I was not able to tell whether the funding was, some of the funding comes from their counties. Other funding would be grant funding, like, for example, from Governor's Highway Safety Program funding or Governor's Crime Commission funding. So I wasn't able to tell exactly what the funding source was. But there are currently 11 total prosecutorial districts across North Carolina that do have grant-funded legal assistant positions as well. So we have, we see that as becoming, I don't want to say the norm, but very common across the state for district attorneys to reach out to other funding sources in order to fund these positions, yes.
Oh, a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
You've mentioned in your presentation, obviously, the Administrative Office of Court has acknowledged they know that there's problems out there and there's not enough manpower. Yet they are the legitimate funding source for these positions. Have, did they exhaust any ability to find money through perhaps the Office of State Budget and Management to continue these positions?
So what happened is, and actually, let me back up because I said AOC. So AOC funded these positions, these temporary positions, from the date that we went live with E-Courts on February 13th, 2023, until actually the end of this past fiscal year. So they stopped funding on June 30th, 2025. Knowing that we needed continued funding, our Conference of District Attorneys actually assumed that funding and continued funding for our pilot county positions. But, and that funding is going to expire at the end of this year. As far as the Administrative Office of the Courts, what they have said is they've continued to view these as temporary-funded positions because they have to continue this rollout across the state of E-Courts. So as it continues to roll out across the state, they are funding new temporary positions in the districts that begin with Odyssey. And then the pilot counties are getting ready to expire. And then all the counties that came live after we did, their positions are getting ready to expire. So it's basically just a continued rollout. And they said there will not be continued funding because they've got to fund other positions for the new counties as they come live.
And you mentioned that there's acknowledgement that the new E-Court system is more labor-intensive than what was anticipated. Is AOC working to resolve those issues?
They have been working diligently to resolve a lot of those issues. Unfortunately, a lot of the issues that we experience with the slowness and the latency of the program itself. Tyler Technologies is the, who owns that E-Courts system that we're working with now. And I'm not sure that there's a realistic solution for the slowness and the latency problems that we experience. And that's why I have to send two assistant district attorneys and sometimes even a legal assistant into the courtrooms to deal with it. Because if you've ever noticed, if you've come in on a Friday morning, like this past Friday morning when we have disposition court, this past Friday morning, we have 1,200 cases on the calendar, which is our traffic, high-volume traffic court. Before we went live, I could send two assistant district attorneys in the courtroom and just a few legal assistants to check people in into the atrium. Now, because of how the system operates and how slow and cumbersome it is, I actually pull every single one of my assistant district attorneys, and I work it as well. So we all sit in the atrium, and we have the lines as people come in to check in people. It just takes so much more manpower because, I mean, I want to still continue to be as efficient in dealing with people's cases as we possibly can be. And we want to get people in and out of our courtrooms and not have them just sitting here, particularly when they've taken off work, to come handle a ticket or a minor traffic infraction that they have. We don't want them here for hours and hours. So I've actually pulled every single staff member that I have, and we work it so that we can get these cases and these people moved through. So it just takes a lot more manpower, unfortunately.
I appreciate the need, and I understand what the value of the temporary positions. And I'm not arguing with the need. My concern is that it's the state's responsibility to fund these positions.
Sure.
And you've basically indicated in your presentation that part of the need was created by the inefficiency in the new system that's got some bugs and it needs to be worked out. But unfortunately, the county is having to pick up the burden on this, at least for the next six months or so. But if the funding is not realized June 30th, and you already said, the manpower study shows that you've got a deficit of several positions, what is the plan to deal with that situation then?
And I certainly respect that opinion, Commissioner Stavall. I think that, you know, I don't necessarily disagree that, obviously, these are, the need is for state, more state-funded positions. But I think as DA's across the state have found themselves in similar situations, it's not always the case where the legislature can deal with it as quickly as counties can. And I think that that's why a lot of district attorneys have reached out to their individual counties for other funding sources. Because as Odyssey has rolled out and as we have learned how difficult and cumbersome the program is that requires so much more manpower, I think the legislature asked for us to come up there and address that situation a few months ago, which we did. And so it is certainly on their radar, and I anticipate that they will be, hopefully, granting more positions in this long session. But again, to answer your question, I think that it's just a situation where I'm going to have to get up to the legislature and make the request for additional positions and then see what the response is and go from there. Because the need won't go away. We will continue to have the need as long as we're working with this program.
Well, that is my concern, that I know the need won't go away. I have full appreciation that these positions are needed. It's just the funding responsibility is the state's. And, you know, we're having to pick up the burden here at the local level. And I don't believe there's any provision to reimburse the county for what they put into this. But if it's a long-term need, which obviously you're telling us it is, then I hope the General Assembly doesn't get the notion, well, the county is already funding this. It should become a county-funding responsibility for this. It's a state responsibility. So I hope you're successful and precedent upon the legislature to whatever sources you have to resolve it.
Absolutely. It is definitely a long-term need. I don't anticipate that it is going to be a long-term request that I will be making for the county. It's just, hopefully, temporary so we can get these positions permanently funded.
Okay. Are the people already, you got people hired in these positions now?
I do, yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
I know you don't want to lose funding and have to go out and re-advertise and try to bring somebody in new. That's a loss of continuity. It's very damaging to your operation.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And is this the second temporary request you've had, or the third that you've had to come?
This is the second time that I've appeared before. Yes, the last time it was, I was losing several positions that had been funded by the Governor's Crime Commission, and they significantly, significantly cut their funding across the state to most all district attorney's offices. So we all were in the same boat trying to figure out how to continue to fund those positions.
That seems like forever ago when we were in the Superior Court room.
It does.
Yes.
It has been a while.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few comments. One, I think that, you know, I think our district attorney does an extraordinary job, and you've got a great staff. And part of serving the citizens of our county is to expeditiously move them through the judicial process. And I think just the parts you're talking about, that these are our residents that have taken off work. They've gone up there to have their day in court. And so I think that, you know, we need to look at ways that we can help with that. And I agree, I agree wholeheartedly. It's a state responsibility, but, you know, we've stepped in before. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we step in again this time and provide, request the, provide the continued funding for the staff, temporary staff positions.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think we maybe all need to work together to send that message to our delegation.
I would agree with that.
We don't want to be transferring state obligations to the county.
One thing that stirs me, Mr. Chairman, is this system, E-Courts, was designed to improve the efficiency of the court system. But what we're hearing, and I've heard this from multiple sources in the judiciary, that is doing the opposite right now. So that is something I think that the state needs to put attention in trying to resolve because electronic system was supposed to improve the efficiency, and we're not seeing that, and it's requiring more manpower.
I think there's a history of that, Mr. Stavall, where the state goes to a software program. If you remember NC Fast and NC Trax, and I was in the medical business during that time, and it was quite not the way they said it was going to be. And so I think we're, and it's a massive undertaking. When you implement a statewide software program and try to bring every, you know, 100 counties onto it, it's a lot. And they'll work out the bugs, I feel sure. And so hopefully, things will smooth out in the future going forward. But it's one of those things that you're already in it. You can't undo it.
I fully understand. As part of my professional career for several years, I was over the IT operation in our agency. The Information Technology Director reported to me, and these software projects can be very challenging and oftentimes underestimated in terms of cost and manpower to roll them out and get them implemented.
And in the meantime, we've got a district attorney that needs to keep business going.
No argument here.
Thank you so much.
All right, so we have a motion. And any other discussion? All right, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Campo Senior Transportation Planner Kenneth Withrow here to present to us on the Blueprint for Safety. Mr. Withrow, good to see you. Welcome to Johnston County. I usually see you at the Campo office, so good to see you here in Johnston County.
Glad to be here and glad to be a part of this meeting. And I want to say to the veterans, because my family consists of a lot of veterans, thank you again for your service. Appreciate all the work that you all have done for our country. So without further ado, let me go ahead and begin with regard to our Blueprint for Safety. Just as we have to have a strong military force to keep our country safe, and as we talked about Farm City and making sure we have a good, safe food supply for our citizens, we want to improve and have a good transportation system that is safe for citizens to access, to use as they go throughout, not only Johnston County, but throughout the Capitol area MPO of the state of North Carolina and the United States. So to give you an introduction, I'll basically talk about what we are doing in terms of the Blueprint for Safety, talk about the engagement process that we have had concerning this particular project. I will introduce two questions for you all, not to directly answer here, but it's something to keep in mind as we move forward with regard to this project. And it's something that we can pose not only to you as Commissioners, but to others throughout the county in terms of interest. And then we'll go into next steps. So why Plan for Road Safety? As we know, this area, along with so much of the Capitol area Metropolitan Planning Organization, is growing. Our area has experienced between 2018 and 2022 over 195,000 total crashes on the roadways. Of that, we had more than 2,700 of those crashes that involved drivers, passengers, bicyclists, and pedestrians. And the more humbling piece is that 654 persons lost their lives on our, on our transportation facilities in the region.
Ken, you mean just in the Campo area?
In the Campo area. Yes, yes. And so this is, in general, a picture of what we, our graphic descriptions are pictures of what has happened that is commonplace throughout, not only this region, but throughout the state and country. And so why is it so important? The United States Department of Transportation, through the Infrastructure Investment Act, allotted funds that would be applicable to improving not only infrastructure, but for, to apply to safety. And therefore, communities throughout the region, throughout the state, throughout the country could apply for what are called Safe Streets for All Grants. And this helps those communities look at ways they can improve safety on their local systems. And I'll talk further about those in our region that are doing that. The state of North Carolina just recently had approved a North Carolina Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Of course, that is applicable throughout the whole state. And the consultant team that led the charge for this, we hired, and they are working on this particular project for the Capitol area MPO, which is VHB. And they'll be introduced later in this process. And so what I've included here is why Plan for Now. This highlights Johnston County in terms of the number of crashes that were captured during the 2018-2022 interval. And we see, based on the graph on your left-hand side, right beside the county, as is displayed. we see, based on the graph on your left-hand side, right beside the county as is displayed, you see a bar graph, and you see a line, a light green line, which basically shows what has a trends, what has occurred in terms of crashes and deaths, serious injuries and deaths in the Johnston County area. And we note that over 29,000 crashes were reported in the area. So it's very important to address that in light of the growth that's occurring. It's not only important for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization in and of itself, it's important as we prepare and we're working on what is called our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. What that is, is a 20- to 30-year forecast plan where we look at finances and look at projects that could be incorporated into a plan that will eventually be moved forward as future projects. And so one of the goals for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, of course, is to promote safety, health, and well-being. And so these are the components of a safety plan. There must be a vision, just like I've talked about with regard to a Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It must be data-driven. It must be stakeholder-led. And who are the stakeholders? The stakeholders include all of us, but particularly the elected officials, law enforcement, and those throughout the community that are engaged in transportation. It must be reactive, addressing what has happened in, at the current time, and be proactive in looking into the future. It must take into account not just roadways, but also bike pit access, as well as transit access, and any other transportation features that we wish to add. And again, we want to address on short-term needs and long-term goals for the region. The goals that we have and are, we are striving for, as you see, the five that are there are, to inform other regional efforts. So it's not just singular to transportation. It involves other aspects of regional work that we're looking to do. We want to increase the awareness of transportation safety and risks. So it's important to have a good transportation system in terms of infrastructure, but it must be safe for the citizens to utilize, to use. We want to identify needs and include and address recommended safety improvements, ensure consistency with the Highway Safety Improvement Plan and USDOT's funding programs that are available, and follow a safe systems approach. And that's a very methodological way in which we are looking to improve safety in, in terms of improving safety and creating a safety plan. So as I'd mentioned before, there are communities that are utilizing or accessing and getting Safe Streets for All Grants. These are the communities in which they are, that have pursued and are, have achieved getting grants. And they're working in cooperation with the Capital Area MPO in creating a safety plan. So we have the Central Pines Regional Council. They have just recently pursued a safety plan. And that, of course, is Triangle J Council Government, formerly called Triangle J Council Government. The Durham-Chapelcarlboro MPO, that is our sister or neighboring MPO to the west, that includes Durham, Chatham, and Orange Counties. We also include the City of Raleigh. They have implemented or have begun work on their plan, and that began in late summer. And the town of Knightdale to the north of us has created, is creating a safety action plan as well. So we see that that work is going on, and this will feed and funding, or feed into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
Ken, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
These municipalities, when they have this action plan, and they have pursued and received grants, are those grants typically to put together the plan properly?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what we're doing in light of what you're talking about, those, those grants are federally funded. What we're doing is strictly funded through the NC DOT and through the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Right.
To make sure that we're not myopic, we're working together to ensure that, you know, we're not stepping on each other's toes. We're doing it in a cooperative fashion so that we have something, there's unanimity, and it's seamless in terms of how it can work for the region.
Right.
And so let me just briefly talk about engagement. Excuse me. The engagement process had begun, in terms of Phase One, it begun in December of 2023. That's when the project had, was, the kickoff had occurred. And it continued into August and early September of 2024, where we created a website, conducted online surveys. There was a summit that was conducted on March 14th of this year. The technical advisory team meetings, we had those. One, we had in Johnston County, which I'll highlight in just a few moments. We, of course, wanted to make sure it got all the way down to the citizens' involvement and acknowledgement of it through social media, creating a digital toolkit. We've been going to various town board and city council meetings, and we thank you all for allowing us to be at the county commissioners' meeting. We've had one also in Granville County where we had a presentation, as well as in Chatham County. And we've been engaged in public engagement events. The project website, of course, is there for citizens to look at. And the online survey had closed in September, and we've been reviewing those results, got a lot of feedback from the citizens from throughout the region. So quickly, with regard to the Regional Safety Summit, we used that time to really introduce the plan, get people, put attention or put eyes on the plan. We did a preliminary data review for what was captured in the region. We want to develop a safety culture for this region. Look, we looked at ways in which we can engage the public. And through, during the process of the Safety Summit, we had small group discussions where we got a lot of public feedback. And so one of the things I wanted to quickly note with regard to the Safety Summit, that safety culture piece we wanted people to understand is that it's not up to just the elected officials to ensure that a process gets to the local level and is implemented. But we wanted that, to know that people, all citizens, have an opportunity to be involved in the process. So it's a shared responsibility. Everybody does their part. We want to encourage people to recognize that every trip and every user is valuable. Again, a part of that shared responsibility, as I mentioned, elected officials, of course, at all those, it involves all those who are in the planning and engineering profession. Again, we've included NC DOT, they're a part of this process, law enforcement for sure, emergency response systems, and so many more persons need to be involved in this particular exercise. And so that's what we wanted to announce from the summit, and that's how we're trying to get people involved in this process. Going back to the mention of TAT meetings that I addressed earlier, we had one in Smithfield on May, May 23rd, and it was, we had a good turnout there. We've had, again, the toolkit I've just mentioned, where we use a QR code where people could scan, and we would get input on the blueprint for safety through survey. We had some local events. This event that is pictured was when NC 540 was not open, but what they conducted, or what we had, was an NC 540 Fest in June, where people, particularly in southern Wake County, as well as Johnston County, would come, and they came out to the site near Wake Tech, and they got a chance to look at the roadway. There was a 3K, a 5K, I believe, out there and some other events. And so we went out there to really be amongst the people to get their input. We got a lot of input from that, from those citizens at that event. We had the Clayton Farm and Community Market Event on July 13th in the area. And one of our council members, one of the council members from the town of Clayton was there. We've also been in the area involving the Flowers Plantation Farmers Market. So we were there on August 3rd. So we had good input at that particular event. And we've just been throughout the region. So as you can see here, we were at Paco Palooza at NC State, River Campbell University to the south here. We've been as far north, of course, as, as Granville County, as west, as far west as Chatham County, and of course, here in Johnston County. So we had tremendous regional coverage. And so what I wanted to pose for you, as I just mentioned, there are two questions that I have for you all to ponder and think about. And this is something we can pose to our citizens. Again, this is something that does not need to be answered here at this time. It's just something for you all to reflect on. What are the safety issues observed in your community, whether infrastructure-wise or behavior that, that you all see? And number, and number two, what stands out and what is different related to roadway safety for your community as compared to the larger region? As we recognize Johnston County is a part of a larger region, when we say the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, we need to recognize that it includes Wake County, then portions of Harriet, Johnston, Franklin, Granville, and Chatham County. So it's a vast region and a vast region that is growing. And a lot of people commute to either Raleigh, or particularly Raleigh, or Research Triangle Park on major roadways that are in Johnston County. And then, of course, some, there's some people who commute the other way from Wake County into Johnston County in terms of work. So what stands out in terms of traffic in, in your area? What trends, what stands out in terms of safety in the area? And what can be done to improve that? And so we're in the process of the next steps. We had our board meeting this past month. It's amazing that we're now in November. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting, and it was introduced with VHB. They provided some input to us. We're going to get ready and do the next summit, next calendar year. And we'll have, of course, future technical advisory team meetings coming up fairly soon. And we'll continue another iteration of town board and city council meeting as well as if invited. We're glad to come back out to Johnston County as well. And so what we're doing right now beyond the engagement process is we're, we, in conjunction with VHB, we're analyzing the data for a high injury network and risk networks, what network and where improvements need to be made. They are in the process of summarizing those engagement efforts. And in fact, we've got, we had some information that was provided during the executive board meeting back in October as well. And we want to continue that momentum to keep people engaged in this. So as we are improving the transportation system from an infrastructure standpoint, we want to let people know we want to improve the safety for people to access that system. And so that's the most important thing that we want to recognize at this time. And so you have here the entities that are a part of this process. We are working in conjunction with NC DOT, particularly their Traffic Safety Unit. And I, along with staff from VHB, again, the creators of the statewide safety plan, who are working on this plan, they are involved in this process as well. So we have a good team. We're doing some good work. And as we work cooperatively with this, you're going to see more information of this, from this, not only in terms of a plan, but also it will be incorporated in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So thank you all so much. And again, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to be here in Johnston County.
Any questions for Mr. Withrow?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. A close associate of mine was the, he's retired now, but he was the Eastern DOT Traffic and Safety Engineer. And from what I could see that he did, he was all about numbers. He would visit rec sites and analyze the data, and then actually implement changes, you know, if it needed a four-way stop, or if it warranted a traffic light, that type of thing. And I guess I'm trying to put this in that perspective. Other than building a plan, how's it going to translate into meaningful, tangible things that actually change the numbers? You know what I mean?
Yes, sir. And a good question.
Are we going to widen the highways? Are we going to reduce speed limits? Or I realize you got to change people's minds, mindset to do that sometimes.
Good question. And I appreciate the comments there. It involves all of that, that you're talking about. There's no doubt that we have to continue to improve the infrastructure in light of the growth that's occurring.
Right.
And the need. We also want to make it safe because we recognize that this region is recognized as one of the more livable, high-quality-of-life regions in the country. We want to keep that up.
Right.
So you have to look at a plethora of things to address that. Now, one thing else, I noted as I came down here to the, to your commissioners' meeting, was that, of course, I don't know if you're familiar with the intersection of NC 39 and NC 42.
Very.
Of course, of course, at one time, it was just basically a four-way.
Yep.
Now it's got a roundabout.
Yep.
And that's one thing that has improved. That's one, that's one thing. Of course, there are other things that can be done to address improvements on, in terms of infrastructure. Maybe it is a reduction in speed. Maybe it is added lighting at certain locations. Maybe there are other things that can be done throughout the region. But all those have to be taken into account to make sure that it is a safe system for people to utilize.
When Campo finishes this plan, will it go to DOT to see if we can implement some of those recommended or identified steps?
Yes. And here's how that is. They are part of the funding process. So they funded some of the, they've provided some of the funding for this process. What happens is, what happens with regard to this is you create, you'll create a plan that is applied to the Capital Area MPO.
Mm-hmm.
In conjunction with the other entities that I just mentioned, from the City of Raleigh, Durham-Chapelcarlboro MPO, they're going to take their information, and that's going to be included in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Once you have a plan of that nature, and it's adopted, it's the Capital Area MPO and whomever is the jurisdiction in which the project is in.
Right.
Will submit that to NC DOT as a future project, whatever that project looks like, so that it can be implemented. Whether can it be implemented soon or later depends upon the scope of the project.
And funding.
And the funding. That's the key piece, the funding. So all those things have to be taken into account. So they're going to be aware of it. They have to be. And so, yes.
Sorry to belabor, but I appreciate that information. That was helpful.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So I did, I had a question. So we're talking about the Capital Area MPO.
Yes.
Which is mostly, almost middle to the, to the west. What about the Upper Coastal Plain? Are they doing something similar, or is this right now just a Campo effort?
I'm not aware of what's happening with regard to Upper Coastal Plain, RPO, but I know strictly of what we're trying to do and how we're trying to improve the Triangle Region, where we, where Durham-Chapelcarlboro is doing their part, we're doing our part, and there are various municipalities that are doing their part. With that in mind, real quick, just to note, once we have created this plan for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, local governments can use that as an umbrella and say, okay, we've got a base plan. We want to apply for a Safe Streets for All Grant, knowing that the Capital Area MPO has created a plan. So a town like Clayton or wherever could then apply for Safe Streets for All to where they could utilize that plan to eventually create their own localized plan.
So will that work? So in Johnston County, we're in the midst of, I think we're in, getting towards the end of updating our comprehensive transportation plan, which probably, if you look at your two questions, probably addresses those in a significant way. So is that going to work like traditional funding does, where we will have our plan, we will get with Campo, and there'll be some sort of scoring system to decide which projects merit funding, or who, who makes the call on the funding?
Well, with regard to the comprehensive transportation plan, of course, that's adopted by the, by the county.
Right.
Whatever in that plan may be incorporated into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That's where the funding piece comes in, because a comprehensive plan is a vision plan. And so whatever is in that comprehensive plan that you all adopt, I don't know when you all adopted anything like that, but eventually, because as we're working on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, once that Metropolitan Transportation Plan is created and adopted, that is the one that has the fiscal constraint, of the financial constraint. So once those projects end there, then, and once that's adopted, that will be the one in which projects will be culled, scored, and adopted, depending upon the money that's available and how that project, how it scores with all the other projects throughout the region. region, so that funding could be applied to it.
Okay. So it'll work similar to, does that, we may have some projects we put forward, the other counties and towns within Campo will, Campo will take a look at the scoring system, and then make some recommendations on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
I've been busy. I'm involved in the Upper Coastal Plain RPO, and I don't, we haven't gotten into this yet, but I suspect when this gets adopted, it may get shared with Upper Coastal Plain. I mean, the format, the structure, because we have been involved in some things lately, but we've got new leadership in that region. But I don't think we've addressed the safety plan.
Well, I think if it's similar to the program for traditional funding, there may be some opportunities for cooperations between the two planning organizations to make sure that there's some projects.
Safety money comes out of a different pot sometimes.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Again, thank you for coming, coming to Johnston County and hanging out with us this morning, and look forward to continuous updates on this.
Thank you very much. Frankly, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Johnson Andrews, our tax administrator, to present the delinquent tax collection report.
As he's walking on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
That was almost a jig. I thought that was gonna...
Yes, I am walking, and I'm very thankful for that. Anyway, before you, you had the September collections report. As you can see, there is a jump of about $3 million from the prior month, and that is tied to the public service billing that we cannot bill whenever we send out normal billing, because those numbers come from the Department of Revenue. So that is included. We did mail those bills out in September. So we have, for all basic purposes, other than our normal, you know, one-off billings that take place through discoveries and things of that sort, this is our levy for the 24, 25 fiscal year that is before you. Just a little bit of update as it relates to not the collections report, but where we are in our year. As you are very much aware, and as many of the public is aware, we are coming up on evaluation here very shortly. We have about 60 days, and the staff is diligently working with our vendor to try to make sure that we get everything wrapped up, and we can send out our new notices around the first year. We don't have those numbers yet, because we're still crunching the numbers, and there's still a lot of work to be done in the next 60 days. But anticipate over the next, well, starting in December, you will be getting more information, the public will be getting more information about the process of where we go from here. So more to come on all of that, but just a very brief highlight of where we are on revaluation. But I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
No, you know, earlier discussions about the state funding, what they should be funding, and the county taking over some of that. There was a lot of misgiving several years ago when we were losing that motor vehicle situation with the state collecting those taxes. But apparently, that's moved real well. Thank goodness.
It has its moments, but for the most part, it works very nicely now. Yes.
That's good.
All right. I don't think we have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is determining the voting delegate and the alternate for the 2024 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference, which is on the 14th and 15th of this month. And if there aren't any objections from the rest of the board, I was going to appoint Ted to be that representative, the voting delegate.
I vote Ted.
And I was going to be the alternate, and in case Ted...
I've got it on my calendar, and I have been registered at the conference.
Okay. All right. And then if there are no objections, we'll go with that. Ted is the voting delegate, and I will serve as the alternate, and encourage Ted to attend.
Yeah.
If you need a driver, let me know.
I will be commuting. I'm not going to stay up there. I won't utilize air, new highways.
There you go. All right. That brings us to manager report and comments. All right. So that brings us to board reports and comments. Commissioner Smith, anything this morning? Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Stovall? Mr. Godwin?
March election day. I urge everybody who hasn't voted to please go vote. If you don't know what you're doing, don't go vote.
I think we've had, I'm going to cheat and look at what percentage of the voters have turned out already.
More than half, I think.
More than 70% in Johnston County, Chair, and Johnston County has set a new turnout record.
So, Mr. Boy, can you, to give you a couple of cents, I knew you had that information. Why don't you share that? Why don't you share that with us?
So commissioners, for early voting for the 2020 general election, Johnston County has set a new early voting record for our county. We had a turnout, working from memory here, just shy of 100,000 votes in early voting. And so that includes in-person early voting, and then mail-in ballots.
Wow. All right. Thank you for stepping up and letting us know that. All right. All right. All right. I will just say, we do have a commissioner appointment process underway for replacing the former member from District 3. And just for the public's information, we have narrowed that down to four candidates who will be interviewed this Thursday here in the courthouse. After we have the interviews, we will be voting on that person to fill that vacancy on the 18th at our 6 o'clock meeting. And whoever is selected will be sworn in, along with Commissioner Stovall for his actual term, and Michelle Pace Davis for her term. So did I miss anything on that?
That might.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right.
That might be.
All these, all these, all the, I was thinking you. I was thinking you. I was thinking you folks. Yeah, I forgot about that.
That whole side of the desk.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I should just turn, yeah, turn this way. Yeah, I forgot about that. All right. So I didn't have anything else. We do have a need for a closed session. There will be no action taken after that closed session, so.
All right, Mr. Chairman. I move the board to go into closed session for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3, to include the state of Cruz versus JCSO, and to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area pursuant to NCGS 1433181A4.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the reasons stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go into closed session after a brief break to clear the ring.